To the leaders, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here another day. I thank you, Lord, at this point, for each and every person that's here. I just pray, Lord, your blessings on what we're about to do and the person that we're about to name as our superintendent. I pray that you'll give us wisdom and discernment to know what our children need. We thank you again for everything that you've done for us and will do in the future. We just pray this in thy name. Amen.
At this point, I would give a motion to adopt agenda. Second, we have a motion from Mr. Taylor and a second from Ms. Williams. All in favor? At this time, we will consider our closed session allowed by North Carolina June Statute 115-C-319 and June Statute 143-318, Point 1181, 83, and 86. A second. Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Sutton and a second from Ms. Van. All in favor? And closed session.
CCS GIST. That's where it is. It's GIST with the dollar sign, S, G. G U E, G U E dollar sign, G.
She goes to hell. She won't come back in, it's gonna be us. So they were originally supposed to be like 20 over ARC and it's ever changed, which made no sense. Like, everybody wants to know this. Why would you do it in a smaller, in a smaller spot? She made it. She was moving, yeah. We didn't think she was gonna make it back in time. Did you make it back so quick because you're parked illegally somewhere?
I'm not parked illegally, I promise.
We were taking bets on whether you were gonna make it in time.
I had faith.
I didn't. I didn't. I'll admit it. Because I'm standing right next to you.
They can have a smoke machine and have strip lighting.
Can I entertain a motion for us to come out of closed session? Okay, we have a motion from this bus parade, a second from this hall, all in favor? We are closed session. At this time, it is, can I entertain a motion for us to accept our new superintendent?
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion to hire Dr. Marvin Connolly Jr. as the next superintendent of Cumberland County Schools.
Okay, very good. And I'm supposed to say this, attorney gave it to me and I took it. I would now entertain a motion to elect Dr. Marvin Connolly Jr. as superintendent of Cumberland County Board of Education effective July 1, 2018, and to approve the superintendent contract previously reviewed by Dr. Conley before. May I have a motion?
That's what I should ask.
We have a motion from Mr. West and we have a second from Mr. Taylor. Ms. Williams or Mr. Taylor? Ms. Williams. All in favor? That's every one of them.
Wait, wait. To vote for it?
Yes. I didn't understand. All right. Mr. West made the motion. Ms. Williams seconded it. And all in favor? Okay. Well, was that?
No, it wasn't.
Okay. All right. Okay. All opposed? Okay. That carries, the motion carries. This is the current superintendent, Dr. Conley. And at this time, I just have a few words I would like to say in the mood forward. And I give each board member a chance to share their thoughts. It's, I can hardly believe that it's been almost a year since we started this journey together and forward. And I'm so pleased to announce and to present to the community, the leadership, and staff, our new superintendent, Dr. Marvin Connolly. Is Dr. Connolly in? There he is. Want to come now and present your family?
Good afternoon, Cumberland County. Certainly is an honor and a blessing to be here with you this afternoon, Chair Sutton, Vice Chair Van, board members, and citizens of Cumberland County. I am thrilled about the opportunity to serve Cumberland County Schools. I am honored and humbled by the confidence that the board has put in me by selecting me to serve as the new superintendent of Cumberland County Schools. I look forward to providing continued support and leadership to foster student success and excellent outcomes for all the children here in Cumberland County Schools. Together with the students, the parents, the teachers, the system leaders, community partners, and the board, we will establish a strategic plan to attain new levels of excellence for all students of Cumberland County Schools. We must graduate college and career-oriented students who can collaborate, communicate, think critically, and who are creative, so that all of our students can compete in an increasingly interconnected world. Here this afternoon, I have with me to celebrate this milestone members of my family and some of our dear friends. My wife, Joyce, is here with us. My 81-years-young mother, Ms. Doris Connolly. Three of our children are here this afternoon, Tiana, Marvin, the fourth, Philip, and our other son, Michael, has work obligations this afternoon. And our seven grandchildren are with us this afternoon as well. Some of the friends from the community, as well as our church family and the broader faith community are here as well. And I think possibly also one of my long-dear-time, longtime dear friends, Reverend Dr. John D. Fuller, I think may also be in the room. Dr. Fuller, yes, sir. Again, I am humbled by the board's selection of me and my wife to come and join the Cumberland County community and to join this team to continue to lead this school system in excellence that you already have, but to go to higher, higher levels and higher standards for all the children here in Cumberland County. God bless all of you and God bless the students in Cumberland County Schools.
I just want to share with you some details about Dr. Conley. Dr. Conley comes to us from Wade County Public School System in Raleigh, North Carolina, where he serves as Chief of Staff and Strategic Planning. Dr. Conley also served in the 82nd Airborne here in Fort Bragg, where he's a military intelligence officer. Dr. Conley's education background is that of superintendent, curriculum instruction, teacher, and principal. We feel honored, proud, and grateful to begin this new journey with you, Dr. Conley. The board has been committed to engage the desires of our community, parents, staff, and all stakeholders during the process in order to build an even stronger and better school district with student success at the heart. It has been a tough process because we were so fortunate to have tremendous candidates. I am so thankful for the opportunity to have met each candidate. We thank them for their interest in Cumberland County. I would like to thank the North Carolina School Boards Association for all the help and support they rendered during this process. And when I call these individuals' names, I ask that you stand to be recognized. Mr. Tim Kenlaw, Andrew Superintendent. Dr. Mary Black, Associate, remain standing. Betty Musserwhite, Associate Superintendent of School Support. Associate Superintendent of Human Resources. Associate Superintendent of Business Operations. Associate Superintendent of Testing and Assessment. Of course, Ms. Best, P. Assistant, as well as slash board assistant. So she does a little bit of everything. And we have to recognize Linda Caesar. Linda, she's out there taking off. Thank you all for caring the torch and making sure the district continues and man's through through this process. We so very much appreciate each of you. Now, will all executive directors and directors stand? All staff and support people in the central office here, please stand. Will all the school principals present, please stand? We thank you all and appreciate all that you do on a daily basis for this district. And Tim, again, thank you for your leadership and guidance over the past few months.
You're welcome. And I may want to come into all the room and say, God has brought himself up.
At this time, we're going to ask that each board member share their thoughts to Dr. Conley and the community, and we'll start with Ms. Hall.
Welcome to Cumberland County, Dr. Conley. I look forward to working with you as you become the tenth member of our team, as you have said several times, to be lucky. You will find dedicated staff members, teachers, and administrators in our county who will respond appropriately to a proven leader who appreciates their talents. It will be exciting to make Cumberland County the best it can be as we move from good to great, your words. Together with our community, we will embark on a new day. Thank you for your willingness to be our next member. Appreciate it so much.
Dr. Conley, I've already told you, welcome several times, and know that it came from my heart. I look forward to working with you and you becoming the tenth member of our board, of this team. I am the wife of 100% disabled veteran. I'm proud of him, and I worked for the Department of Army for 21 years. So that's another thing that makes me know that you would be a fine, fine person for this community. This is a military community. I notice that you was an intelligence, so that I know that you on top of everything. And that is something that seriously, we look forward to working with you and to you working with the wonderful family of Cumberland County Schools in the coming years. Thank you again for accepting our call and being the superintendent of this great institution.
I'd like to take some time to welcome the family of Dr. Conley and welcome to Cumberland County and Cumberland County Schools. And we know he's going to make a difference. It's a tough job when you interview or when you had 31 applicants and you narrowed it down. And we have full confidence in you. I do want to share that things will help us keep our schools safe, help us challenge our children, and then, please let teachers teach. And that's the only three things that I'm asking you to go through to take. And I thank for the majority of our community. And we're just so pleased that you're here and with us, especially your family. And you can tell you have a very good family. You did pretty good with them, and you all did pretty good with them too.
The search for our Cumberland County School Superintendent was very rewarding and successful. Our final list was strong and had candidates of which any one of them could have been the choice. Dr. Conley brings a strong academic background and a plethora of positive attributes with him. He was ranked very high on my list. However, he was not my number one choice. I am very hopeful, though, that he will be able to move this county to the next level as he directs our system to heights never reached before, and that all students in Cumberland County, especially our African-American students, will be able to realize the success that will help them become productive citizens, lifelong learners, and enjoy choices that a great education affords. I support you as our choice, and I want you to know that, because even though you are not my first choice, I stand with Benjamin Mays and his expectations and thoughts that I have but admitted on this 62nd Senate. Thrust upon me, didn't choose it, didn't plan it, didn't choose it, but it's up to me to use it. Given account if I abuse it, and I must suffer if I lose it. For the only, there's only just a minute, but when we think about the children of Cumberland County, eternity is hanging. So I stand with you on that.
Dr. Conley, I did not prepare anything to say to you, your family. Here in Cumberland County, we are a family, and we want to welcome you and your family as part of it. Excuse me, as a product of Cumberland County Schools, as a parent of children who graduated from Cumberland County Schools, and as a teacher and administrator, former teacher and administrator of Cumberland County Schools. I, for one, knew when you walked in the door that you would be very capable and would do us an honor to be our superintendent. And I'm looking very forward to working with you. I feel like as a former student, parent, and employee of this county, you are exactly what I need, and I'm looking very forward to leading our system.
Welcome, Dr. Conley. Since most of the board have said some, a lot of the stuff that I would agree with, but I too did not write a speech, but I also wanted to take the opportunity, because I was another member, as you, as you saw, did not have you as my first choice. However, I do support you and look forward to working with you. We had a great pool, a wonderful pool. We were very fortunate. And based on that, I have to be truthful to myself. I have to be truthful to the children. And so I want you to understand that even though my decision was not for you to be first, does not mean that I will not support and we will not be able to move forward. We will make sure that we support you and encourage you. And so I'm looking forward to working with you. And thank you, family, for being present. We're looking forward to seeing the success that he will bring to our county. Thank you.
Dr. Conley, I don't have any flowery words. I'm just a retired school teacher. So I've seen it from every edge, but I do know somebody genuine and honest and full of integrity when I see them. And I believe I've met that in you. And a principal told me a long time ago, when it wasn't even popular, if you expect a lot, Susan, you'll get a lot. I believe you expect a lot. And I believe with the people that are surrounding you and your leadership, we're gonna get a lot for all children. And that's what's important. It's what happens with the children. You have my full support. You heard it in the interview. I was impressed from the very beginning, because I believe you are what you say you are. And I appreciate that, and I know where it came from, Mama. We do appreciate you. I'm so excited. I have sat and twiddled my fingers for it to get to 12 o'clock. I can't wait to see what you can do, because I do believe we have the best people in Cumberland County. You won't find better people to work with. They're right here. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Conley, after 16 years on this Board of Education, I'm more excited about the future than I've ever been. So, and I've got two children left in the system, and on behalf of the 50,000-plus students, we're, you're the right choice for all the right reasons. I feel good about the board. We worked really well in the process, and it's produced a great outcome. From your days as a major in the 82nd Airborne, to multiple degrees, MNC State didn't hurt me in my book. With your distinguished career in Wade County Public Schools, we're just very excited about the future, and I want to welcome you and your family. Thank you.
But Tim, we'd be remiss if we didn't allow you to say something if you wanted to.
Well, we just met. I think I'm a quick judge of character, and it's, I got a feeling of déjà vu. And it was in June, 25 years ago, that I came into this system and I was interviewing on that interview, Dr. John Griffin. And you've known this world that I ever worked with, I was thinking of you and Dr. John Griffin. And you remind me of him so much, how you just carried yourself in the room in our initial conversation, your manners. And I keep in that conference room information about Dr. Griffin, and that's how much he meant it. And we're gonna be all right. Thank you.
At this time, we have some county commissioners. I've got all kinds of notes coming at me. So we have past Commissioner Billy Arkin here. Billy, stand. We have Commissioner Glenn Adams here. We have Commissioner Chair, Mr. Larry Lancaster here, who was a previous board member. Mr. Michael Booth is here. Are there any more elected officials here that we go the books?